Would you call the roll please?
Pacino is absent. Evans. Is there white?
Where?
Moody.
Here.
O'Toole.
Here.
Schneider.
Here.
And Madam Moore.
Here.
That's six present, one absent.
Alright, first item of my business is approval of the agenda and minutes. Any additions to the agenda from staff? Nope, no additions. Alright, I'll call for uh. Uh, minutes.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Yes, and the agenda.
And the agenda.
Alright, second?
Second.
Alright, motion didn't second. Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Planning Commission meeting minutes. We've approved that. Ah, okay. Citizen comments on non-agenda related topics, no action can be taken. Anyone? Seeing no one? We'll carry on. Planning Commission and staff reports and comments. What you got, Joe?
Uh, so, there's a couple things I want to get over today. Uh, the first is that tomorrow night at a work session for City Council, uh, we have presentation for both the first and third street projects. Um, if you guys remember, first street would be redesigned in order to accommodate a month plus being um, group stormwater over there and also increase EDA accessibility to that region. It's between um, Garfield and Park Street, which is right in front of the depot itself, um, and um, our consultants, uh, Norris Design, WWC, be there, uh, to kind of answer questions and to kind of go through things and show, um, show City Council what we've gone, gone through and kind of take comment on that. Um, this is going to be kind of accumulation of two different uh, outreach events, um, and so this is kind of kind of the pre-final design to some degree, so, um, that's going to be there. The other one is Third Street. If you'll remember, that's primarily looking at beautification efforts that are there. Uh, all of this is available on the Agenda Center uh, for City Council, if you guys are curious about what is being presented. And or not, I'm just going to City Council meetings. The other one is this Friday, we do have the farmer's market. We'll be at Site seventy-eight. Uh, I do appreciate those of you who are able to make it. Um, and we do understand that this time is valuable. Uh, we do have some additional time between six and eight. Love to get um, one or some, uh, more than one of you there, but um, do understand, this has had place outside of planning commission. So, uh, we'll have Emma send out more details to you all, so that if you're there, maybe can't participate for a time still know where we are, what we're doing. This is just a good opportunity for everybody to kind of understand what we're better about. Kind of said, some of the city initiatives, but also what the role of Planning Commission itself is. Um, I think probably you guys know better than most that there is some confusion about what Planning Commission is within the city, and so, um, trying to get out there ahead of some of these comments and hopefully, um, have people understand their, their government organizations, so.
Is this in addition to the one on the twenty-ninth? Uh, that we signed up or is? Oh, it's for August fifteenth. Okay. I may not be able to make that one. It's my wife's birthday.
If you want to coordinate with Emma on that.
Okay.
We can hopefully figure something.
I, I, I too have a recreational emergency Friday.
Okay. Yeah, well, if you guys can just let Emma know and then we can go from there, um, appreciate it.
That's why we have Donald.
Up to you Jake.
So, anyways, that's it for me.
Alright, uh. Next item is disclosure is ex parte communication and potential conflicts of interest. Have we got any?
Yeah, I've got, actually, I see Christie sitting out there, so I guess I got two. I'll let the Planning to uh, Commission determine whether I should recuse myself or not. I don't think so, but um, I work with Christie on and off. Sometimes she works with me. We bounce into each other all the time. I did not help her prepare um, this amendment for non-conforming uses, um, and the same with the variance request. Um, I work with Justin. Um, I did not help him prepare that, so I'll let the Planning Commission make a determination for me.
Has anybody got any objections? Chris?
Oh, oh.
Micah?
No. No, I guess, I guess not. If Jake doesn't wants to, wants to put it in front of. Now, now Jake, Jake, you, you work with Justin in the same office.
I work with him in the same office. He works for the same company as I work for, correct.
Okay.
Any other?
I, I have a conflict a bit of, on, on the variance. Um, I'm working for Justin, um, as a sub um, on a, on a project.
Okay, on not on the project for the variance?
Yes, for the, for the project.
Okay, that one you'll probably have to excuse yourself.
Yeah, I, I, I feel more comfortable.
Does anybody on the Commission have any objection to Jake sitting these, uh, going with, ahead with these two?
I don't.
Alright, I guess the sense of the Commission is you're fine.
Okay.
We'll carry on. And Chris, you'll excuse yourself for the variance.
Thank you.
Alright, that's good. We'll carry on. Cut planning projects. Alright, no old business. And we'll take up TA twenty-five dash zero 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 one. Joe, take it away.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Chair Commission. Uh, so today we have before you a text amendment that is looking at um, pretty non-conforming uses of structures, so, um, the biggest thing to keep in mind here is that the use is non-conforming, and that is what's holding a barrier to some development. Um, through some of our processes and some of our conversations with you all, we've heard some desire to make some changes to pre-existing non-conforming sections and loosen up some of the regulations, and so in our conversation with the applicant, um, we thought it was reasonable to bring this before you all for consideration. Um, specifically, we're looking at the gradual or the incremental change of a use of a property into a conforming use. So, as it stands right now, if a use in a structure is non-conforming, there's very little a business can do, um, in order to to change it. Um, essentially, it is being phased out. The structure can't be expanded, the use can't be expanded. Um, and changes even to the interior are somewhat limited. Um, that's primarily to make sure that a use does have kind of a sunset date. Um, the longer you keep on um, messing with a, with a site, the more likely it is to meet the needs and eventually, um, with, with non-conforming uses in districts, the idea is to phase them out. However, in the cases where maybe a owner of a property would like to add a conforming use onto the site, that is also not allowed as stands. Um, and so the the application right now was to, was submitted in order to allow a conforming use within a zoning district to go into a building that has a non-conforming use as part of it. Uh, I realize that this may be a little bit confusing and feel like circular talk, but um, I will note that the applicant and in their cover letter did submit a, um, some changes to that section that they believed was appropriate. Um, I did make some amendments to that, and so the recommendation to you all is to approve the recommendation, recommended text amendment that I proposed. However, I did want to show you all the, um, the initial changes that the applicant made, which can be found within um, the staff report, but also within the um, cover letter itself. Um, overall, we do think that this can help out businesses within the community, um, without expanding any non-conforming uses. Essentially, what it does is that once a use goes into a building that is conforming, it has to stay that way. It can't revert back to the pre-existing non-conforming use. Um, and it, it will gradually spread hopefully to the rest of the building. Um, what you will see in some of my, my uh, modify, modified recommendations is that, um, some just kind of clerical language in order to make sure that it is a separate use, that it is distinct and different from the previous use and isn't just like, you know, it, the very superficial, um, barrier between the two and could easily be reverted back. Um, but yes, the the legal notice was posted in the Boomerang on July twenty-six, twenty-twenty-five. Um, this probably comes as no surprise, but we received no comments on this um, text amendment. Um, and we believe that this is within the the purview of you all to decide to either recommend or not, um, changes to the second, this section of code to City Council. And I stand for questions, and I also, the applicant is in the room as well as the applicant's representative, if you have any questions.
Doug, does anybody else want to go first? Go ahead, Joe.
Uh, sure, I'll go first. Um, just a question about the, this specifically says structure. Does this, is this associated with the site at all? And the reason I ask is because I have had, um, some folks contact me throughout the years wanting to like resurface their parking lot or do something with a larger vision of their building in the future, and we always start going through code of what happens and pretty soon it's very cost prohibitive for them to just resurface their parking lot because they, you know, it, it snowballs very quickly. So in this, um, text change, text amendment, does that apply to anything on the side or is it just the structure?
Chair through you. Um, so this is for the site and structure. Um, there is a specific section of the non-conforming, um, code that, or section of code that does specifically relate to surfacing of paved areas, um, and will not be in the purview of this. Um, if there are, um, it, it will still have to follow code if changes are made to like the exterior of the building or, um, anything like that, but the in, and, and I don't want to bring up the specific case that this was brought before, but it kind of does bring up a good example. For the most part, this will just be in the interior of a building, um, as our conversations with the applicant have gone so far. Um, if there was any exterior modifications, it would have to come into compliance with code still, so. Okay, thank you.
Apropos of that, Joe, I see a difference between the modified recommendation and the proposed uh, text from the applicant, uh. The proposed text reads the app, alteration is limited to a portion of the structure and that portion will be converted to a permitted use. But you have in your, uh, staff recommended one that the area occupied by the conforming use is distinct and functionally separate from the non-conforming portion. So, not to bring up the property in question, but as a general rule, suppose you have a business that exists and you want to put an owner occupant into the business and convert part of it to a residence, how would you, without changing the building, make that distinct and separate?
Right. So, I think that the functionally separate portion is going to be the key here in the fact that, um, you know, if they were just putting in a bedroom and like adding some sinks and a kitchenette and those sorts of things into the building, it would be very different from like actually walling it off and making it completely separate, maybe inaccessible fro, from the rest of the building. Um, this is something that I think that sometimes like, what we'll see is, well, just this room without any changes is just going to be used for a use that's permitted within an area without any changes or being able to differentiate. This is a different type of space than this type of space. Um, generally speaking, yeah, you may find some like home occupations within a, um, within a residential zoning district, um, where some of those lines are, are separate. This one will be, need to be like a distinct area for living space as opposed to just like
Yeah, it's not a distinct area.
Office space that somebody put a cot in or something like that.
Well, with, with structure in there, it sounds like, you know, uh, it could be, you know, making someone completely redo the structure, but alright, that's pretty much what I've got. Donald?
So, will this language allow people like the applicant who brought this issue up? Will that resolve the issue for them?
It should, yes.
Yeah, I, I think the language is much better than the language that was proposed because the, I had no idea what uh, one C meant. The use category of the structure is changed to one that according to table blah 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 is numerically closer to a permitted use in district. Yours is much more specific and clearer, and I think it's much better.
Any other questions for staff? Jenna?
Item C, the non-conforming use does not expand into areas previously transitioned to conforming use. So for example, if like a part of it was already converted to living space, you couldn't annex a bedroom onto it, for example, or is that what the spirit is getting out there, just so that I understand?
Um.
I'm not sure, just.
So, to be frank, this is a little bit rapid repetitive within code itself, but what it essentially means is that, um, once it is converted into a conforming use within the district, unless for some reason, um, unless for some reason we go through a text amendment and allow the previous use to be allowed within that district, that space can no longer ever be used for that pre-existing use. Um, so, you lose the grandfathering clause within that section of the, the, the
The building.
Yeah, within the building. Structure itself, so.
Oh, I see.
So, right, right. It, to be clear, it is a little bit repetitive from what is in the rest of that section of code, because you, it says within that section of code, you lose it once you move away from it, so. If that section is confusing, there are other sections that support it, and we could certainly remove that if that is the desire. Um, but yeah.
Okay, I understand. It's a little confusing, but I can live with it.
Jake?
John?
Ah. Alright, Joe, I think that'll do. I'd like to hear from the applicant, if we could.
How are you guys today?
Great.
A little tired. I drove to Castro at five in the morning, so. Um, yeah, looking to create a management residence on site. Uh, we do have, to answer some of your questions and not go too in-depth, uh, we have over fourteen thousand square feet of, so there's plenty of room to do that and be able to separate and make that clear. Um, and, uh, didn't know where to go, so I brought Christie in on this. I know codes, I don't know building what you guys do, so. But, uh, mostly, uh, you know, we, uh, my family's probably lived out of town for thirty years, um, and, uh, we just would like to, uh, have more options in town and be, be more part of the community since I'm there all the time anyways. I just don't sleep there, so. But, uh, just having that kind of square footage makes a lot of sense for us to, uh, be able to have the family more in town here and then contribute to the, to the community, so.
Good. Just for the, could you state your name for the record?
Uh, everybody knows me as Dino. I'm John Raffoni.
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant?
So maybe this is better directed at Joe. Uh, so, does this automatically allow someone to make the changes on the exterior of the building? Or that has to go through a separate approval process if those changes are proposed? And I'm not clear whether that's your intent, but I mean, this is changing code, so.
So, in this particular situation, uh, there's basically an enclosed courtyard which no one can see.
Right.
And so, there would be, there's probably going to be some new siding put on that anyways. Just needs to be updated.
Okay.
Uh, the only exterior modifications, uh, would be changing two windows to egress windows. And then there is a door that would, would be changed.
Okay.
Um, just changed out, but
Okay.
Other than that, it's all brick and masonry, so there isn't any modifications to be made or aren't any.
Okay, I know the building. Okay.
Jared?
Step into my apologies. Uh, Chair Commission, so, applications will still need to go through the proper processes, so if it is a commercial building, it would still have to go through a site process, it, pro, site plan process if any exterior modifications were made to the building. Any interior modifications that are made go through the building permit process. Um, so, this doesn't, this section of code does not exempt the applicant from any other application processes that may come up. Um, whether it's the applicant we have before us today or any others within any other zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Seeing none, thank you very much for coming and for putting in the work to do this. Any discussion on Commission's part? It sure would accept a motion at this point.
I move to recommend City Council approve Staff Amendments fifteen twenty-two zero two zero dot A of Laramie Municipal Code as recommended by staff.
Second.
Alrighty, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Turn the page. Alright. Any long-range planning projects to discuss? Hearing none, uh, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn and reconvene as, uh, Board of Adjustment.
I move that we adjourn and reconvene as Board of Adjustment.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yeah, we have a corner. Doug or Chris? See you later. Uh, Board of Adjustment will now hear, uh, variance twenty-five dash zero zero nine, oh, zero 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 nine, seven fifty-two Cedar Street, request for reduced setback. Who's taking that one?
Chair, could we do the swearing in of witnesses?
Okay, sorry. Uh, anybody wants to testify in this?
I'm here, Justin.
Alright, well, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir.
That'll do for me. Thank you.
Thanks.
Philip, take it away.
Yes, good evening, Chair, members of the Board of Adjustment. Tonight, we're reviewing a request from the property owner, Mr. Justin Turfair, to reduce the required southern side yard setback at seven fifty-two Cedar Street from the required five feet down to one foot. The property is zoned R two, medium density residential, and the request is necessary to allow the construction of two detached units that will meet all other applicable development standards under the Unified Development Code. So pursuant to all of these variances, there are certain required findings that need to be met, and I will go through those um, for you now. Finding A, there are special circumstances or conditions peculiar to the property. So this lot is only twenty-four feet wide, much narrower than current standards. And this lot was also established prior to the adoption of the Unified Development Code. To the south of this property, uh, there's an unusually wide eighty-foot right-of-way along Gibbon Street, which also plays into, uh, this variance request. And, um, there, so these unique conditions to the property, um, it, it is unique compared to, um, other properties in the area. I mean, originally platted, a lot of them are still twenty-four feet in width, but most of them have been consolidated at least into two lots, so, or they have existing houses on them. So there's not a lot of vacant, um, twenty-four-foot wide parcels in this area. And the conditions that make it unique were not created by the applicant. Finding B, strict application of the code would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the property. So with the five-foot setbacks, um, the, are the side setbacks, that would mean that this parcel is twenty-four feet wide, will only have fourteen feet of buildable width that would remain, which would make it, um, barely impractical to construct two units, which is being proposed here. And, and meeting those dimensional standards. Finding C is not applicable because no solar wind is being proposed here. Finding D, the variance is the minimum adjustment necessary. So again, this goes back to finding, um, B, where the strict application of the code would allow an extremely narrow building footprint. Um, so this one-foot setback on only the southern side um, could be argued to be the minimum needed to allow for functional building footprints of what's being proposed. So I just want to reiterate here that all other setbacks, the northern side, the front and rear, all those will still be met. It's just, um, on the southern side ordering Gibbon Street. Finding E, the variance is in harmony with the purposes and intent of the code. Um, so I would, I would say here that all other dimensional and design requirements are going to be met by this property other than this one setback. Um, so I would say that this finding is met as well. Um, and then finding F, the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood or impair adjacent property use. So, in reviewing the neighboring blocks, you can definitely see where, um, older houses that were built within the twenty-four feet definitely encroach, and some are e, even, um, closer, I mean, right on the property line, close to zero setback. So it's not out of, uh, um, the character of the neighborhood to, um, to, um, make that setback or, or to shorten that setback. Um, and yeah, there will be no impacts to traffic, um, visibility or pedestrian safety here. Um, the sidewalk will still be built and there's plenty of room there on the Gibbon Street side. Um, I believe the site plan's been included in your, um, packets. Um, public notification was done in the usual manner for variances, mailings to all property owners within three hundred feet, uh, published notification, the Boomerang, as well as posted, um, on the property. We did receive one comment from a resident in West Side, uh, Emily King, that was forwarded to you all. Um, but no other public comments or objections were received. Um, again, staff finds the request meets the criteria needed for a variance and recommends approval. And I can answer any questions.
Any questions for staff? Hearing none, thank you, Phil. Oh, Donald?
So, does the, I went out and I looked at the, the lot today. Does the problem here arise because the plan is to put two units on this piece of land? In other words, if a single structure was put on this, and given that there's only fourteen feet wide of buildable width, would, uh, would it be possible to build a single housing structure on that lot? And given that there's only fourteen feet wide of buildable width, would uh, would it be possible to build a single housing structure on that lot?
Honorable Chair, through you, I would say that the width would still determine, um. Well, the width is still going to be fourteen feet, which is extremely narrow for even one unit. Um, so I think it's a hundred thirty feet in length. Is the standard width of those parcels, but. I would say no, I I would say that the the width of it, regardless of being one or two, is definitely the inhibiting factor.
There's setbacks. There's plenty of small houses on those lots. I think the house next door is also an extremely narrow house to the north. When is the last time this group uh. Uh, granted, uh, essentially an exemption for a one-foot setback from a sidewalk?
Honorable Chair, through you, I don't have that information on hand, but I could, I could certainly, in the last four years, I don't believe that. We've had one that's replicated this specifically. And we definitely have variances for setbacks. We did one for Coal Creek Cuff, or this body. I believe everyone on this body did the one for Coal Creek that was a zero-foot setback in the downtown commercial district. But I can't recall any in the last four years, but I'm glad to do that review if if warranted. Honorable Chair, again, to your first point about neighboring houses, certainly there are ones that are not meeting current setbacks. And that was, I I alluded to that during the staff report, that if you go around in in West Side, there's. Most of the lots are consolidated, so they're. Forty-eight feet in in width, which gives you a lot more room, right, a lot more um, options there. Um, but if you go to Railroad Street, you'll see them built right up to the property line. There may also be some over, over the lives, it's just an old area, it's platted, one of the regional plats in Laramie. And of course, we didn't have these dimensional standards. When they were constructed originally.
Okay, seems to me, maybe to the chair, it just seems to me, I'm a little uneasy with the idea of. Setting a precedent if someone has decided to buy a very narrow lot. And they're seeking to um, get an exemption from the requirement. And granted, yes, around the neighborhood, there are some that are closer to the sidewalk. But those are mostly, those are, from what I could tell, historic properties. Uh, and I'm just thinking going forward, is this something that is. Going to allow people to shoehorn structures onto narrow lots, and this will be cited as. An example of where we gave that concession.
Sir, Honorable Chair, through you, I I would say that we would, we are talking about finding. F here, where the variance will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. Uh, or impair adjacent property use. So I'll let the Board of Adjustment um, debate the character of this neighborhood. But I would say upon review of the properties directly south of this, just on the other side of Gibbon Street. It certainly looks like they are toeing the line, I mean, six sixty-eight. Six sixty-eight North Cedar is, looks to be, the principal structure looks to be over the property lines, so. Um, as well as six seventy-two, and I can't bring this up, but these are directly south of Gibbon Street. If, you know, if if warranted, we can have the applicant discuss um, the type of of housing, although I would. Um, strongly, um. I I would, I would say that we shouldn't get too far into the debate of what's going in here, as long as it meets our two standards, right? That's the zoning district that it's in. Um, the character of West Side, um. You know, it's, it's very, as we all know, we we have studies that have tried to um. Put a label on it, but it is very eclectic. There are a lot of different architectural types over there. From the original to modern. So I would, I would draw attention to that. I mean, we're talking about the building footprint here. And obviously, when it get, when the applicant gets his building permit. The applicable building standards will have to be met as well. Which we do have some residential design standards. And those would have to be met.
Okay.
Yep, I've got a couple of quick ones. So, Phil, Gibbon Street, it just shows it like, maybe a block and then it, I'm assuming it dead ends there. Is there any future plan for it to connect over to Snowy Range? I didn't look on the long-term streets plan to see if that was the case or not. Is it mostly going to just be a dead-end street like that?
Honorable Chair, through you, so when you look at the subdivision layer. There does, it does show a a connection. It it does show of a. Private property that goes across Snowy Range Road, um, that would connect to Gibbon. But I can tell you from conversations with YDOT, with our recent reconnecting communities effort. Uh, we do have a meeting with them coming up on, south of there, on Flint Street, just a crossing as far as. Uh, maybe a hawk signal or something like that. Um, but that is a forty-five mile an hour section of Snowy Range Road there as well. Um, so your question is, is there? Is there a connection proposed there? And I can tell you from the major street plan, there's none. Um, so to directly answer your question, no, there's no, um. There's no connection proposed to Snowy Range.
Okay, second question is, on the site plan, the sidewalk is shown about three foot off, which I don't know if anything out there. In that neighborhood really meets current, like, engineering codes, but that doesn't. And is there a requirement for kind of changing that sidewalk to be. Where the site plan shows it, does that have to go through another variance to get? That sort of approved to go in that location?
Honorable Chair, through you, uh, so engineering and public works staff were part of this discussion early on too, so they've reviewed the site plan. And they're in approval of this, this meets ADA um, requirements, so that's what we're going for. It is, I would say unconventional, but um. For this, uh, Public Works does have some flexibility on where the sidewalk goes and they approved this design.
Okay, okay, then I guess that answers a couple more questions I have too regarding engineering, so. Thank you.
Jenna?
Yeah, I just have a question that's sort of a follow-up. To Donald's question. For item D, it talks about the minimum adjustment that will accomplish the purpose. And one foot is the minimum adjustment that will accomplish the purpose. Is that purpose, the purpose is related to the two structures that again, being allowed on the property, not just development as the property of a whole? That's right, is that correct? Just clarifying that.
Honorable Chair, again, I would say that building within the ten feet of setback would put the. It it it's, it's tough wording, I will agree with you in that finding, but I I would say, um. We were proposed with a one-foot setback, I mean, we're in agreement that with the footprint, footprint being proposed. Kind of matches other housing types there. You know, a fourteen-foot wide house, I'm I'm not sure if they even exist over there, it's so small. So there is some um, debate there, I would say there is some flexibility there, we as staff felt it was the minimum adjustment. Um, that would be required, I mean, I'll I'll remind the board again that. In any section of code that gives quantitative or gives numbers. Um, that that need to be met, like a quantitative standard. One could apply for a minor administrative modification up up to twenty percent reduction. Which does not go to this board, it just goes to staff and and we can um. Review and if there's a public component to that as well. This far exceeds that, obviously, going down to one percent, we're reducing by eighty percent here, if I'm doing my math right. Um, but, you know, we as staff feel like that, that is, it's already so narrow. That uh, one foot gives them the the. The allowable width to provide a reasonable product in that area.
Interesting.
I. I just have some comments, that is an extremely difficult lot to build anything on. Ah, and to squeeze two residences in here is a remarkable feat, I mean, it's got. Overhead power lines, you got a gas line running through it, it's narrow and. An overly wide street on Gibbon, it's going to be a difficult site to do anything else with in the future. I I see this as uh. Giving Laramie two starter homes in a good neighborhood. And I think that's something Laramie desperately needs, so. I'm in favor of this, uh. We'll hear from the applicant next if there's no other, no other questions.
Honorable Chair, if I may, just add one more thing, given the, that that Commissioner Moody recused himself. We would need the the majority of the entire body to approve a variance, so that's four.
So that, there's five of us here, all five would have to vote for it?
Oh, well, four out of, since we have seven.
Okay. Thank you. Would the applicant care to address the commission or the board?
Randy Turfair, um, Justin's father and um, I guess a couple things. Building at fourteen feet would be a, a task, it'd be horribly tough. And with the Gibbon Street being as wide as it is and setting it there. And I went over there too, because I wasn't very familiar with it. And I did look at some of the houses and the continuity of what we think we're going to do on there. It's an infill lot. If nothing's built on it, you're right, it'll remain empty. And. The structures. Would be two starter homes. And we went over the numbers and it. What we're planning on doing with that would fit, otherwise it'd just be almost impossible, so.
The only other question I had, would you have to subdivide that lot? Or can you build two homes on it and be in compliance, or do you have to divide that lot up?
I don't think so, I'm pretty sure we're in compliance putting the two structures on it.
I should have asked staff that one, that's more in there, Bailey Wick.
Honorable Chair, to jump in, yes, to the, the minimum lot size for two units is met there. With, without subdividing it, if the applicant were to subdivide it, then it would not be the minimum lot size required. So that's how small this lot is.
Yeah, that's, it's, it's a tiny piece of dirt.
It is. And I guess. What we'd put on there to add to the tax base of Laramie, so um, I don't have much more to comment on.
Any questions for the applicant? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Yep, thank you.
Uh, I will ask, I don't see any, if there's any other public comment or anybody on Zoom, I don't see anybody. Clerk, there's nobody else on this? What is the thoughts of the board? Do we discuss this, any?
I mean, I think it's, is. In irony is, the city isn't housing with all the studies and stuff that suggested that two houses are better than one. And a fourteen-foot house would be quite a narrow. Quite a narrow house. And I mean, even an eighteen-foot, is that what's proposed? Is a narrow house.
Donald?
Uh, there's a line in Hemingway about bankruptcy. And I think if I remember the quote correctly, how do you go bankrupt? And the answer is two ways, gradually and then suddenly. And I guess, I grant, it's important to have starter homes. Uh, my son would like to stay in in town, the only way he can stay in town would be if there was a starter home for him to buy, this might be one of them. But at the same time, we are. We've kind of committed as a group that development on um, on the west side will be appropriate. And what we're seeing is a lot of nibbling away at the traditional style of housing that's been built there, so. Uh, my inclination is to vote no on this, I just feel uncomfortable that we're. We're allowing a, someone made a decision to buy a very narrow lot. And now we are making a concession about how close houses can stand to the sidewalk. And I just think that's uh, that's not a smart move.
Well, just point of clarification, it's the back portion of the lot, the side.
I understand that.
Yeah, they still have a good setback from the sidewalk. Any other comments, questions? Discussion? John? Well, hearing nothing else, Chair will entertain a motion. Anybody want to make a motion?
Well, if I can find it.
I got it here, I think.
Usually on the.
Oh, it's a very, okay, so I will move to approve the requested variance from Laramie Municipal Code Table fifteen dot twelve dash two. To reduce the southern side setback from five feet to one foot at seven fifty-two Cedar Street, based on findings of fact and conclusions of law.
To your second.
Second.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's a variance, do we need a roll call for a variance? Uh, we should get one, okay, let's get a roll call vote for a variance, clerk, if you would.
Okay, Pacino is absent, Evans? Eyes are white? Moody is absent, O'Toole?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Matamore?
Aye.
That's three yeses, two nos, and two absent.
Currently, the motion has failed. Sorry about that. That concludes the business of the Board of Adjustment.
We need to adjourn.
Now, we, yes, we do need to adjourn officially, Ellen. Waiting for a motion to do so.
I'm. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We are adjourned.